Good evening, everyone. I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my honor to call this meeting to order tonight and ask the city clerk to call the rule.
Councilmember Joyner.
Present.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Andrew Bowen.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Hall.
Present.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the City Council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you so much. And would you join the City Council and me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our Sergeant in Arms tonight is Lieutenant Josh Caffey. Thank you, Lieutenant, for being here. And our Fire Marshal tonight is Micah Bodford. Thank you for being here as well. Ms. Pate, give us your update.
Yes, sir. Thank you. A few different announcements. DOT has provided a quick update that I'm going to pass on to you about the Liberty and Main Street two-way conversion project. Milling and paving work is near completion on the section south of Brookstone. And traffic signal work is progressing with the installation of mast poles, mast arms, wiring, and the traffic signals along the project limits. The milling and paving of Liberty Street, Main Street, and a portion of Third Street in the downtown area is tentatively scheduled to start in August. The work does cause a change to the normal flow of downtown traffic, so we hope people are paying attention. Patrons of downtown are still able to access all the downtown businesses. However, they should be aware that there may be a need to use alternate routes when approaching Liberty and Main Streets. And this will all be great when it's finished. And so hopefully by the end of the summer, that'll be the case. Recreation and Parks is currently in the process of repaving some of its parking lots at a variety of community centers and a couple of parks. So if residents are planning to visit one of the facilities and they have seen activity going on, they can visit the departmental webpage to get information about what's happening in the particular park that they are interested in attending. Then this Thursday, June 19th, City Hall or City offices will be closed in recognition of the Juneteenth holiday. We will also be closed on Friday, July 4th, for the July 4th holiday. Both holidays may cause a slight disruption to the normal refuse collection cycle. So again, we ask residents if that's either of those are your normal collection day, to go to the website to get details on that, or if you're after that day, you might be delayed a day as well. We do encourage people, the best way is to download the Winston-Salem Collections App, which will provide you an up-to-date accounting of when all the various collections are coming to your particular residence. And a couple of events going on. The Business Inclusion and Advancement Department will hold public meetings, both virtually and in person, on Tuesday, June 17th, to discuss the recent expansion of the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy area. Properties that previously did not meet location requirements may now be eligible for assistance. So if you believe that you might fall into areas, we would encourage you to attend those meetings. On Tuesday, June 24th, at 1:00, at the Brown School Loss, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Division of Waste Management will celebrate the 750th Brownsfield site in North Carolina. The Brown School Loss at Legacy Heights was a Brownfield site, and the Brownsfield program works with prospective developers to redevelop abandoned or idle property where the threat of environmental contamination has hindered its redevelopment. Agreement creates special conditions to mitigate the contamination and limits the liability of prospective developers, so a site can be safely redeveloped and put back into productive use. I think we can all agree that the Brown School Loss is a very productive use on that site. If you, as councilmembers, if you want to attend, if you let Jamie know, and so she'll get you, make sure you get all the details. Registration is requested for this meeting or for that event. Rock Out the Quarry, which is a Parks and Recreation event, will be held on Friday, June 27th, at 7:00 PM at the Quarry at Grant Park. This is a free event to kick off the summer. New this year will be a spectacular drone show. Be sure to arrive early to get the best seats in the house. Event parking will be located at Bowman Gray Stadium with free shuttles to the park. Again, you can get information on our website at thecitywinston Salem.org under weplay, the backslash weplay. And then the Police Department has several events of interest in July. On the 3rd, at 8, between 8 and 12, they will do coffee with a cop at the Starbucks on University Parkway. On July 18th, at 10:00 AM, the BLET Class 80 is graduating from Cavalry at Cavalry Baptist Church. And on July 28th through August 1st, they will be hosting the Youth Citizens Police Academy. So with that, I'll stand ready to answer any additions.
Any questions, Mr. Pate? Thank you, Mr. Pate. We do have a one honorary of tonight. If we could have item H1, please.
Item H1, Resolution Honoring Kevin Cheshire for His Years of Service to Aspire. Whereas Mr. Kevin Cheshire joined Aspire, previously known as the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem in 2013, as Vice President of Real Estate Development and General Counsel, and on January 14th, 2020, was appointed Executive Director, bringing to the role a vision for innovation, inclusion, and long-term community development. And whereas Mr. Cheshire's leadership, Aspire embraced a modern, community-integrated approach to affordable housing, in part by securing the highly competitive $30 million Choice Neighborhood Initiative Implementation Grant, as exemplified by the completion of the first phase of six at the Brown School Loss, a well-designed, 81-unit, mixed-income development that reflects a shift away from the historical isolation of low-income families and toward dignity, inclusion, and equitable opportunity. And whereas Mr. Cheshire led the successful acquisition of $10 million in new capital investment across the Aspire property portfolio, significantly enhancing the agency's capacity to meet current and future housing needs. And whereas he played a pivotal role in revitalizing the long-neglected Happy Hill neighborhood, facilitating renewed development on lots dormant since 2004, under his guidance, Aspire deeded over a dozen lots to Habitat for Humanity of Forsyth County in late 2023, enabling the construction of 13 new homes with city funding support. And whereas Mr. Cheshire negotiated a master development agreement with a private developer for the construction of over 20 affordable, single-family homes in Lansing Ridge, creatively repurposing land once considered unbuildable and expanding the city's affordable housing footprint. And whereas Mr. Cheshire spearheaded the acquisition, debt reconstruction, reconstructuring, and redevelopment of the Heights Apartment Community, formerly SECU Commons, off Old Greensboro Road, transforming a vacant and underutilized site into a vibrant community that now includes a daycare, medical clinic, and market-rate housing. And whereas he saw the completion of Brookside View, a 17-home development, and the first self-developed, self-performed, single-family housing project in Aspire's history, marking a significant operational milestone. And whereas Mr. Cheshire guided the issuance of over $20 million in affordable housing bonds, ensuring the preservation and stability of privately-held affordable housing stock within the city. And whereas Kevin Cheshire's tenure is distinguished by a steadfast commitment to equity, strategic development, and community empowerment, shaping Aspire into a model agency recognized for innovation, sustainability, and service to the people of Winston-Salem. And whereas Mr. Cheshire led the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem to rebrand itself as Aspire, following a national trend away from outdated language and into a new name and culture, Aspire was officially unveiled on June 10th, 2025. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the City Council of City of Winston-Salem hereby recognize and honor Mr. Kevin Cheshire for his distinguished service, exceptional leadership, and profound contributions to Aspire and the City of Winston-Salem.
Is there a motion?
I move for approval of item H1.
Seconded by Councilmember Cipio. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Kevin, are you here or someplace? There he is, right up front. Kevin, I'm going to ask the Mayor Pro Tem and Chairman of our Housing Committee to present this to you as well. And of course, the Chairman also served on the Housing Authority Board at one time herself.
I want to thank you. Thank you so much, Kevin, for your service. I was already on the City Council when I met you on the Housing Authority. It was very honorable of you to step into the position of the Acting Executive Director. I was there when David Tompkins was there, and I was there when Larry Woods was there. And the three of you did outstanding job. But your legacy, you know, what the mayor just read, you should be very proud of it. As I said before, everybody doesn't understand what you have to have to do what you have to do when you're a leader. But I want to thank you on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Winston-Salem for all of what you've done and what you're going to do in the future. Congratulations to you and your family for your service to Winston-Salem.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the Council. I have to admit that I had taken my reminder for the Council meetings off of my Outlook calendar already. So I'm really grateful to some folks on my team who let me know that I needed to be here and dress appropriately. This was completely unexpected. More unexpected was that I had some friends who I've had the privilege to work with show up for me tonight, despite me not mentioning anything to them. And they managed to arrange to have my wife and my two children be here tonight, which means the world to me. Brooks and Quinn, can you come up here and stand beside me, please? I have a full agenda and a lot of work, so I don't want to take more time than I already have. There are a couple of things that I'd like to say. One is just how unbelievably grateful I am to have had this opportunity to serve in this role. This, what was unexpected, absolutely. I feel so unworthy and inadequate, unable to express my appreciation and my gratitude and my affection for you all, to the extent that the accomplishments that were read were completed while I had the privilege of being in the role as the Executive Director. They were accomplished because of a lot of people who were on the City Council at that time and who are on the City Council now, who were members of city staff at that time and members of city staff now, and certainly the colleagues who were nice enough to stand up, or I would ask them to stand up. They were nice enough to stand up and let my wife and children sit down, but they mean the world to me. I'm glad my kids are here because, as you know, a lot of the stuff that we do happens not because our professional obligations take precedence over our family obligations, but sometimes the work that we do for the betterment of the world and for our children's future requires that we may miss a baseball practice or a birthday party. And that's all because of the people that we serve in an attempt to make the world a better place for them in the future. So I'm just so thankful to you for giving my children this moment and giving me this moment. So while I am leaving this role, the city of Winston-Salem and its people and the experiences that I have had will be with me forever. And I can never thank you all enough for tonight and for this gesture and for all the kindness and support that you've shown me over the years. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kevin. Well-deserved honor.
Definitely.
This meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, as well as on the city's YouTube page, and it will be replayed on Wednesday at 9:00 AM and again Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. Of course, copies of our agendas, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online on the city's website. And just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Tonight's agenda, as always, is comprised of two parts, the Consent Agenda and the General Agenda. As always, the practice of the Council to take the Consent Agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been already approved by committee of the City Council or are being submitted in established, with accordance with established procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless the councilmember show requests, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the Consent Agenda will be enacted with one motion. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to have removed?
I move for approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second?
Seconded by Councilmember Hall and Cipio. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. And we'll start voting with the computer from this point forward. We'll now go to the General Agenda, which is basically the 25-26 budget and Strategic Plan and other items. There is an agreement with Winston-Salem Speedway, as well as a resolution authorizing the conveyance of a home. May we have item G1, please?
Item G1, Consideration of Items Approving the City of Winston-Salem Budget for the Fiscal Year 2025-2026, the Annual Appropriation and Tax Levy Ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem, and the Project Budget Ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem.
Recognize our budget. And Vibration Director Scott Tesh is going to kind of give us a little quick preview, although you've done this about, how many times now? About six times. So go ahead, Scott.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the City Council. We do have a very brief presentation. I would encourage those who are watching here or publicly to go and look at the many presentations that have been given to the City Council. They are in our city's agenda system, but we will spend just a few minutes talking about the recommended budget that is before you this evening. Again, the proposed budget was presented on May 19th by the City Manager. The major priorities in that budget remain mostly unchanged, but we'll talk about a few of them. The first, continuing to become an employer of choice with respect to compensation and benefits for our employees and the facilities and equipment that they use every day. Maintaining our current service levels to the extent possible, strengthening our financial position, and that includes the elimination of two of our debt programs, both for vehicles and equipment, as well as smaller capital projects to save taxpayers money on interest over time. And then the Capital Plan, one of the priorities there being finishing and continuing into design and construction many of the capital projects that you have appropriated in prior years that are still on the books. We have mentioned several times that this is a revaluation year, tax year '25, fiscal year '25-'26. The map that you see on the left is the map that was provided by the County Tax Director. Again, a heat map that shows the areas that have intensities of yellow, red, and orange are those areas that had higher growth values. And you see on the table on the right, residential values grew in the range of 60%, while commercial and industrial properties grew at about half that rate over the last four years. From the budget workshop that we had last week, there were $3.2 million worth of changes that have been put into the recommended budget for this evening. These are the same ones that we went over at that meeting. $1.8 million worth of employee, excuse me, personnel salary and benefits reductions in the general fund, $100,000 reduction at the convention center, recognizing how well that facility is doing from a financial standpoint, is $1.9 million or a half of a penny off of the tax rate compared to the proposed tax rate. And we'll talk about that on the next slide. Again, $1.3 million reduction to the Transit Fund, roughly three tenths of a penny. And so you have $3.2 million off of the originally-proposed budget, or eight tenths of a penny off of the proposed tax rate. The proposed tax rate was 57 and 1/2 cents. It has been adjusted down in this recommended budget to 56.7 cents per $100 valuation. And again, a $3.2 million reduction from the overall proposed budget of $727.9 million. This slide shows the revenue neutral rate, tax rate, property tax rate, compared to the recommended 56.7 cents, which is roughly a little less than $8 per month for the median homeowner in the City of Winston-Salem, with that median home value being roughly $233,000 value. We have updated this several times throughout the budget process. For the City of Winston-Salem, you now see that our taxes and fees are updated as of this 0.8 cent reduction in the tax rate. The Charlotte, Greensboro, Raleigh, and Durham charts are their proposed budgets. Some of them have been adopted and are in various stages of being so. But what you can see here, from an annualized basis, in the City of Winston-Salem, major taxes and fees proposed at just over $2,100, and ranging from $270 to $690 a year higher in the peer jurisdictions. So that is all I have in terms of a presentation. There are many items that are related to each fiscal year's budget process. I'm going to spend just a few minutes going through those in the carves, both for the public and for the City Council, and particularly for those councilmembers who may be new to this process and haven't seen the 13, 14, 15 agenda items and some of the excusals that happen. Item G1, which you have before you and you will take a vote on, includes the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance, as well as the project budget ordinance for all of those things that councilmembers don't need to be excused for. You will then see several different ordinances with councilmembers being excused, and those are related to nonprofit boards that individual councilmembers sit on. The Budget Office has tried to push those together in certain circumstances to get two or three councilmembers recused at the same time, so that we don't have multiple items. And so that's why you see in some cases, there are four or five community agencies together and three councilmembers that are excused from voting on that item. So items G3, 5, and 7 will include those additional annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance or project budget ordinances related to those community agencies. There are a series of items that I will go through very quickly, beginning with G8, is approving the Capital Plan as a financial planning guide for the years outside of the current year. The FY '26 budget includes the Capital Plan first year in the window as part of the budget, and then the other five years will be approved via resolution as a financial planning guide. We do have the orders to collect, which allow Forsyth County to collect our property taxes on our behalf. We do have the annually-required resolution for the opioid settlement funds, which we use to help with our bear team. We have a resolution adopting the user fee schedule. The only change to that from what had been proposed is that user fees would be effective January 1st, 2026, where some of them had been effective in July before. And then you have two changes to the city code. Those are related to things that are already in the user fee manual but are required to be adopted because they are in city code. One is related to special event permit fees, the other to stormwater fees. And then the last two items related to the budget, one is the Strategic Plan. I have a very brief presentation on that. And then you have the Personnel Resolution, which does compensation changes, the 2% in July and 2% in January, as well as several changes to leave accrual benefits for city employees, including the Fire Department. So again, item G1 is before you currently, and that is the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance, as well as the project budget ordinance that all of council can vote on. It also sets the tax rate at 56.7 cents per $100 valuation for the general property tax, and sets the 9 cent business improvement district tax for downtown.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions, Mr. Tesh?
Councilmember Cipio?
Mr. Tesh, please tell us the total budget that we're voting on.
Total budget was proposed at $727.9 million. It has been reduced by $3.2 million to $724.7 million.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tesh, I did have some questions. Those response questions that you responded to, I wanted to ask, you had said that there are nine total positions vacant in recycling and sanitation. And I wanted to know, are these frontline positions?
Many of them are. I'm going to look to Assistant City Manager Voita. Many of them are, but there are one or two that were supervisory in nature. I do not have that list in front of me, but the vast majority of them are equipment operator positions that pick up trash and/or recycling four or five days a week.
And these questions were pertaining to hiring freeze. And I just wanted to know because of, what I don't want us to do is reduce the level of service that we provide for our citizens. We are asking them to pay more in taxes, and I want to make sure that we're not decreasing the level of service that we're providing. So all of them, except for two, are supervisory positions.
I believe that is the case. I would have to go back to the backup documents for that, which I don't have in front of me, but the vast majority of them are operator positions.
And the supervisory positions are new positions?
They are not new positions in the budget, no. They are supervisory positions that had existed in prior budgets.
Okay. And so I have two more questions that I want to verify. Number three, in your response, you said as far as new positions in the 25-26 budget, that one would be for a utilities, automations engineer, and the other would be for a street outreach coordinator. And both of these positions would not be tax-funded positions. That's correct?
That is correct. The street outreach coordinator is funded through CDBG, and the automation engineers in utilities, which would be covered through utilities rates, and is actually being offset because it was previously done on a contract, and they are reducing that contract and bringing the service in-house.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Any other questions, Mr. Tesh? If not, I'm going to recognize our Chairman Finance Committee for moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion if there's a second. I do have a few comments I'd make.
Yeah, please.
I move to approve item G1, including the project budget ordinance and the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the fiscal year '25-'26, in adopting the general property tax rate of 56.7 cents per 100 of value, and the downtown Winston-Salem Business Improvement District property tax rate of 9 cents per 100 of value.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Adams. Go ahead, Ms. Clark.
This has been talked over a lot. I will not review everything we talked about the last three weeks, but I do want to make a few comments. First off, it is a 4% increase over the revenue neutral number, which is required to be computed by law when we have a reevaluation. There are no new services in here. If you look at where the 4 cents is going, approximately half of it is going to our bus system. There's no increase in services. Matter of fact, there's probably going to be some decrease in services. But for a number of years, probably since I've been on this council, we have used fund balance in the Master Transit Fund to pay for a large portion of that budget. Those funds no longer exist. They've been used up, and therefore, we have to pay for them out of the property tax. I made this analogy in committee, and I'll make it here again tonight. We only have one knob we can turn to generate revenue, and that is property tax. So when, for example, here, the fund balance is zero, where do we get the money from? It has to come from fund, from property tax. We have no other place. Secondly, we did open a new fire station several years ago, and were able to use a federal grant to pay for those salaries. That grant has now been used, are used up. The time limit is over. And again, the only way we can replace that is with property tax. Those folks have been on the books for several years, but the source is different. Last two comments, we talked some about the fact that a lot of money comes to our budget from federal and state funds, more than we think from federal and state funds, more than we think. A lot of federal money filters through Raleigh, but it ends up here. We have assumed in this budget, kind of a steady as we go, that we will receive the funds that we normally do. As you know, there's a lot of things happening in Raleigh and Washington. Probably the most, the one I'm biggest concerned about is the fact that the State Senate eliminated all our POW money, which is what we use to pay for streets and sidewalk maintenance, from the budget. The House budget included it. They're now in conference and will come back to us. A lot of change happening in Washington as well. Unfortunately, it will be in the September-October timeframe that we will probably know what is going to happen there. And at that point, we will respond accordingly. I'm not even going to guess what we're going to do if we get some bad news there, but we will deal with it when and if we need to. Lastly, as I mentioned in our budget meetings, we did not spend any time this year on our nonprofit allocation. We kept them the same as they were in years past. As I said then, I'll say now. I have had many a year when we spent more time going over that one page than we did everything else in the book. But I've ensured everybody, and once we are finished with the budget, we're going to have an off-budget cycle, look at the allocations in the nonprofit. By the way, folks out there, this is about $1.5 million out of $730 million budget. And we will go through that and make whatever changes we want in anticipation of next year. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a motion on the floor to approve the budget and tax levy ordinance for '25-'26. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes, and anyone opposed, The motion passes a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Burke voting no. All right. Item G2?
Item G2, motion to excuse Councilmembers Andre Bowen, Hall, and Cipio from item G3.
Again, as was mentioned, these are because our council members serve on various nonprofit boards and commissions, and state law requires us to excuse them from voting on items that involve funds for those. So is there a motion to approve item G2?
I have second.
You got it, Mr.?
Calm down. I need to read it here.
Oh, hey, Mr. Clark.
I make a motion to excuse Councilmembers Andre Bowen, Hall, and Cipio from voting on item G3.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Is any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G3?
Item G3, annual appropriation tax levy ordinance for fiscal year 2025-2026, authorizing the city's annual operating appropriations for anticipated revenues and expenditures related to services provided by Reach Center at Winston Lake YMCA, Collidium Family Services General Fund, Mixer Maker Space, the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, and Piedmont Triad Regional Council.
Mr. Clark?
I make a motion to approve the annual appropriation tax levy ordinance for fiscal year '25-'26, authorizing the city's annual operating appropriations for anticipated revenues and expenditures related to services provided by Reach Center at Winston Lake YMCA, Collidium Family Services General Fund, Mixer Market Space, and the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, and Piedmont Triad Regional Council.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes, with those individuals that have been excused from voting not voting. And the motion passes unanimously with three individuals excused from voting on this particular item. All right. Item G4?
Item G4, motion to excuse Mayor Pro Tim Adams, Councilmember Cipio, and Councilmember Clark from item G5.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you. I move the motion to excuse Mayor Pro Tim Adams, Councilmember Cipio, and Councilmember Clark from item G5.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Are we supposed to vote?
And that is unanimous. You can vote on excusing yourself.
It's confusing here.
Councilmember Clark, you can't make the motion on this one.
No, I'm not. Mr. Taylor's going to make it.
Mr. Taylor, I recognize Councilmember Taylor for motion. If he's ready.
I'm going to read it.
Item first.
Oh, thank you. Item?
Item G5, annual appropriation tax levy ordinance for fiscal year 2025-2026, authorizing the city's annual operating appropriations for anticipated revenues and expenditures for the National League of Cities and the North Carolina League of Municipalities.
Now, Councilmember Taylor.
I move for approval of item G5.
Sure. Second by Councilmember Joyner. Thank you. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And if you've been excused, don't vote. The motion passes unanimously with two individual, three individuals, excuse me, excused from voting on that item. All right. Item G6?
Item G6, motion to excuse Councilmember Cipio from item G7.
Is there a motion?
I got it.
Ms. Clark?
Make a motion to excuse Councilmember Cipio from item G7.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Councilmember Cipio, you're excused from item G7. Item G7, please.
Item G7, project budget ordinance for fiscal year 2025-2026, authorizing appropriations for expenditures and revenues for federal housing funds to include Community Development Block Grant Fund, Home Investment Partnership Trust Fund, Supportive Housing Grants Fund, and HOPWA Fund.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
I move motion to approve project budget ordinance for the fiscal year '25-'26, authorizing appropriations for expenditures and revenues for federal housing funds to include Community Development Block Grant Fund, Home Investment Partnership Trust Fund, Supportive Housing Grant Fund, and HOPWA Fund.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And then, Councilmember Cipio, you can vote. The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Cipio being excused from voting. Item G8, please.
Item G8, resolution approving the capital plan for fiscal years 2025 to 2026 through 2030, 2031 as a financial planning guide.
Councilmember Clark?
Move the motion to approve the capital plan for the fiscal years '25, '24, '25 through '29, '30 as a financial planning guide.
Is there a second?
Second. Did you read that one?
Did I?
Supposed to be '25 through '26, '30 through '31.
Just adjust the years to '26 through '31 there.
Twenty-six through 31. I amend my motion.
All right. Motion as amended. Is there a second to the?
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G9?
Item G9, resolution adopting orders to collect property taxes for the tax year 2025 and previous years, which allows Forsyth County to collect property taxes for the city as outlined in the inter-local agreement.
Councilmember Clark?
I move that we adopt orders to collect property taxes for the tax year 2025 and previous years, which allows Forsyth County to collect property taxes for the city as outlined in the inter-local agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Discussion? Not all those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G10?
Item G10, resolution directing the expenditure or opioid funds to support the Behavioral Evaluation and Response Team as a criminal justice diversion program.
Mr. Clark?
I move the resolution directing the expenditure of opioid funds to support the Behavioral Evaluation and Response Bear Team as a criminal justice diversion program.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cipio. Discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item G11?
Item G11, resolution adopting the user fee schedule for the city of Winston-Salem for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Councilmember Clark?
I move the resolution adopting the user fee schedule for the city of Winston-Salem for the fiscal year '25-'26.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Councilmember Adams, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Tesh, on the user fee changes that we made, I saw, we know that a lot of them won't take place until January 26th. Will, on our website, will we, are we going to do like a bold, or call-out, or color, or group them so that the citizens can see readily what features have been changed?
Absolutely. We will have that available on the website, and we will work with the marketing and communications team to make sure that we're getting the word out about that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item G12?
Item G12, ordinance amending Chapter 74 of the city code related to streets and sidewalks for user fee changes to special event permit.
Councilmember Clark?
I move to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 74 of the city code related to streets and sidewalks for user fee changes to special event permit.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Item G13?
Item G13, ordinance amending Chapter 75 of the city code related to stormwater system management for changes to stormwater fees.
Councilmember Clark?
I move approval of the ordinance amending Chapter 75 of the city code related to stormwater system management for changes to stormwater fees.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Any discussion? Questions? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G14?
I voted, I was too late with my, sorry, get me on there. Okay, thank you.
The record show Ms. Clark voted yes for his motion.
Item G14, resolution adopting the 2025 to 2028 City of Winston-Salem Strategic Plan.
Councilmember Clark?
I move the resolution adopting the '25 through '28 City of Winston-Salem Strategic Plan.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And our screens all went dark up here.
I did vote, though.
You did vote. Everybody voted. It was all.
It was unanimous? Okay. Thank you. Item G15?
Item G15, resolution amending Article 2, Section 30, and Article 3, Section 44 of the City of Winston-Salem Personnel Resolution Regarding Compensation and Vacation and Sick Leave Accruals.
Mr. Clark?
I'm going to make the motion if there's a second. I do have a written statement I'd like to read. Thank you. I move the resolution amending Article 2, Section 30, and Article 3, Section 44 of the City of Winston-Salem Personnel Resolution Regarding Compensation and Vacation and Sick Accruals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Go ahead, Ms. Clark.
Thank you. This has been a contentious issue, so I have some written prepared comments I will read. Each year, the council passes a budget, which is the blueprint for where the city will spend its financial resources. It is a difficult balancing act between the needs of our community and the available resources we have. Without exception, the needs will always exceed the amount of taxes we can expect our citizens to pay. It is no different from our own households, where we personally make decisions on what we can afford. As an aside, this is a particularly difficult year, as the shift in the tax base has resulted in an unprecedented increase in the tax rate on single-family homes, which is where most of our citizens live. The overwhelming majority of our money is spent on labor, hence the difficult balancing act of adequately compensating our employees, while at the same time setting a reasonable tax rate. How do we determine a fair salary? And I include both wages and benefits as components of the salary. Traditionally, we ask, what does the marketplace say a specific skill is worth? Another way of saying this is, what do we need to pay to get a qualified person to come work for us? This is normally done by comparing what other organizations pay for the same skill set. Fortunately, this is fairly straightforward thing to do, since the salaries paid by municipalities are public record. We typically compare ourselves to neighboring communities that are like us, specifically Greensboro, High Point, Durham, and sometimes Raleigh. The city manager just recently announced that we will be doing a three-year salary review. We will take a third of our employees each year and compare our salaries and adjust accordingly to the best of our financial ability. Just an example of comparing us to the other cities. Council was informed several weeks ago that the benefit package offered our firefighters vary significantly from what our other employees receive and what other firemen across the state receive. The motion before us corrects this. We have employees that work eight, 10, 12, and 24-hour shifts. However, most employees work a 40-hour week. The firemen are different. They work 24 hours on and 48 hours off schedule that results in a 56-hour week. While this schedule is unique to our fire department, it is not unique to other cities, as virtually every fire department in the state works this schedule. Bottom line, they work 56 hours versus 40, which is a 40% more time. They are deserving of more vacation and sick time, as they work more than the city manager, and the city manager is proposing just this. The firemen in this budget receive 40% more vacation and sick pay than the other employees under this proposal. This seems fair to all, and that is not the question. Everyone I spoke with thinks that deserve this amount. We've also learned that virtually every other city provides 40% premium. The problem is, under the current system, our firefighters receive twice this amount. That is, our firemen receive twice as much vacation as six days the firemen in Greensboro, High Point, or Durham, and other cities as well. This is not fair to our other employees or taxpayers. If our firemen deserve twice the vacation and sick time as firemen in Greensboro, do our policemen not deserve twice the vacation and sick time as policemen in Greensboro? Does a sanitation worker not deserve twice the vacation and sick time as a sanitation worker in Greensboro? We may want to do this level of benefits, but folks, we cannot afford it, because this is a $20 million addition to the budget price tag. In conclusion, the proposal is fair to the firefighters, as it offers a benefit package comparable to our peer cities. The city manager has agreed that the fire department will be in the group of salaries to be reviewed first this year, so that our firemen will have competitive salaries to go along with competitive benefits. It is fair to other employees, as all employees are offered the same percentage of time off commiserant with the hours worked. The firemen, of course, receive more vacation and sick pay since they work more. Lastly, it is fair to our citizens, as we are asking them to provide competitive salaries and benefits, no more, no less. This is not a popular decision to make, but it's the correct one of balancing the needs of all parties involved. It is time to correct this problem. Delaying this action just kicks the can down the road. If you want to see what a local government organization looks like that kicks the can down the road rather than making difficult decisions, just look at our school system. It is the laughingstock of this state, because they have refused to address problems and kicked it down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Andre Bowen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, as Councilmember Clark said, this has been a very hot topic, and I appreciate his point of view. But there are two things on this resolution, one with pay raises and one with the accrual rates, and I would like to see these two items separated. So I would like to make a substitute motion that we vote for these two items separately, making two separate resolutions to amend Section 30 and Section 44.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second to the substitute motion. The substitute motion is to bifurcate the two items on this item. All those in favor of that motion, please indicate by voting. Can we vote on that, on the substitute? we vote on that, on the substitute, voting yes on the substitute motion and no if you don't agree with the substitute motion? And the motion that passes, six to two. All right, so we'll, Madam Clark, we'll do with the first item, the first part of that.
So it would be a motion for Article 2, Section 30 of the Personnel Resolution.
Okay, so Ms. Clark, you can have that motion, Article 2.
I don't have anything written.
What is it, Ms. Clark?
But I'll make it if she says it's, the motion is to approve Article.
Article 2, Section 30.
30, which has to do with the pay raises.
Pay raises, that's right. All right, Ms. Clark makes that motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second. Mr. Andre Bowen, this has had to do with the pay raises, one currently and one in January. Is that correct? Discussion, questions? Let's go ahead.
Ma'am, could I have the clerk please restate the motion clearly, please? Or the attorney, or somebody.
So, a motion for Resolution Amending Article 2, Section 30 of the City of Winston-Salem Personnel Resolution Regarding Compensation.
And that approves the two pay increases for the, 2% now and 2% in January, I believe.
It's 2% in the first full paper in July and 2% in the first full paper in January.
Councilmember Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question, another clarification question. The 2% now will be for all employees. What about in January?
The compensation program that's in place with the 2% would be a scale adjustment, and all full-time employees that are performing appropriately would be getting that increase. So it's more like a cost-the-board increase in July. In January, it would be dependent upon satisfactory review as they typically do as a merit increase.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all in favor of the motion to approve Items 2-30, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that motion passes with seven in favor, one opposed. Councilmember Burke voting in the negative. So now we need a motion, Mr. Clark, to approve Section 44, is that correct?
A motion for Resolution Amending Article 3 of the Personnel Resolution, Section 44, regarding vacation and sick leave accruals.
I move approval of Section 3, Article 44 of Vacation and Approvals.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Discussion, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Joins. I would like to say that for the past several weeks, we have been here and we have listened to several presentations. Last Monday, we were here and we listened to a presentation from ACM Voita, particularly about the sick and vacation accruals. And I think that ACM Voita, I think that you should know that despite it being a very lengthy presentation, that I at least walked away with being able to learn at least a little more and to get more concrete information about what was being offered. The unfortunate part about that presentation was that it was made after the public hearing that we had on the proposed budget. What that means is that there were folks, in particular, I will say fire, that did not have the opportunity that particular day to be able to respond at all to what we received last Monday. The other piece to that was that at the end of that presentation, there was a recommendation for this to come back to council in the fall and for us to address that then. And so I'm not necessarily supportive of doing that tonight. Again, I appreciate all the information and I got a whole lot more information than I had before, so I do appreciate that. But I would like to offer a substitute motion to continue this agenda item impacting Personnel Resolution changes found in Article 3, Section 44, regarding vacation, sick, and leave accruals until Monday, August 4th of 2025. So that is the substitute motion that I'd like to offer. I will offer one other thing.
Is there a second to the substitute motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember.
All except as a friendly amendment to mine, if that would help.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you.
You can bring another item for.
No.
Okay, you can speak to this item. Okay, go ahead.
And so I appreciate that, Councilmember Clark. And to your remarks, it does kick the can down the road. It does. But it does it with a specific date, and that is literally our very next meeting to August 4th, which is a little different than what was presented. So thank you for that.
So the motion before us is to deal with Item, Section 3, Item 44 on August the 4th.
Yes.
All those in favor of the substitute motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that motion passes unanimously, so this item will come back on August the 4th. All right, Item G 17.
Item G 16.
16, excuse me.
Resolution Authorizing Agreements with Winston-Salem Speedway LLC and Winston-Salem State University for the Acquisition and Maintenance of a New Bowman Gray Stadium Scoreboard.
Mr. Ben Rowell, please.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of City Council.
Good evening.
I've got a very brief presentation to kind of give the Cliff Notes version of what's on the agenda. So back in February, the city was host to a very successful 2025, the Cookout Clash. Next slide, please. So there's some highlights from that. 3 million viewers, the second highest viewed sporting event that weekend, a Nielsen rating of 1.5, 1,500 mentions of Winston-Salem during the broadcast, ticket sales from 40 states, five countries, and three continents. Hotel occupancy was up 26% on that Saturday, and Visit Winston-Salem was a key partner, and you can see all of the support that they provided to help promote the community as part of that weekend. The city did also benefit financially from that weekend, and here are the results from that. We had revenues of a little over $210,000 and expenses of almost $165,000, which included a one-time investment to expand the concourse to provide more point-of-sale locations for food vendors. So that resulted in net income of $45,000 if you exclude the one-time expenditure, what we would hope would perhaps be the ongoing impact for future events. It was more of, closer to $120,000 there. So from a financial standpoint, we felt like it was a success. NASCAR, I believe, felt like this was a success. However, the one bit of negative feedback that we did receive was the current scoreboard. NASCAR has a standard for the type of fan experience they want to provide, and the scoreboard is a critical part of that, to be able to, allow fans to maintain or watch the racing order, but also to see instant replays. And those of you who attended the clash, you know that there were two suspended scoreboards. That made it a little bit difficult to view in-race replays and things like that. And so the current scoreboard that we have was bought in 2008. We financed it over 10 years under a three-party agreement with Winston-Salem State University, Winston-Salem Speedway, Inc., and ourselves to equally share in the cost of the debt service and annual maintenance. You can see there that it's got four static panels and an LED screen. It is a revenue generator for the parties, including the city. You can see there the Pepsi sign. We do have an exclusive pouring rights agreement with them. In exchange, we provide one panel for them. But over in recent years, it has become increasingly challenging to acquire panels, to be able to make sure that the LED matrix is fully functional. We have to import those panels. So in discussions with NASCAR officials, they shared a couple of concepts for a new scoreboard, and these are just simply concepts, renderings at this point. One would be very similar, but just obviously an improved resolution for the video board, still have the static panels. The second option would be an all-video scoreboard, which I think would provide more dynamic activity on the scoreboard, including advertising. The estimated cost of the scoreboards would be, of a new scoreboard, right now is $1 million. That's the conservative cost that we are working with as we're having discussions with NASCAR about a partnership with acquiring a new one. So over the last several weeks, city staff have been working with NASCAR officials and Winston-Salem State University officials on developing a cost-share arrangement to acquire a new scoreboard. And so, and the basis for that would be the events that each party holds at the stadium. And you can see there, the table, we look at in terms of revenue generating events. There are usually, well, ideally 19 race weekends, weather permitting, generally five home Winston-Salem State football games, which amount for, you know, 24 revenue generating events for the city. And so based on that, you know, proposed cost share would be 50% city, 40% Winston-Salem Speedway LLC, and 10% university. One of the bits of feedback that we did receive during the course of our discussions was the desire on the part of the university to have a more equity-based split rather than the equal three-party share. So the item before you tonight is a resolution authorizing agreements, separate agreements between the city and Winston-Salem Speedway LLC, and the city and Winston-Salem State University. In terms of the agreement with Winston-Salem Speedway LLC, in order to facilitate acquiring the scoreboard, so that we can get it here and installed and potentially put us in a position, you know, to host another major event. The plan is to, for Winston-Salem Speedway, Inc., to acquire the scoreboard, install it, and then lease it to the city over a five-year period with the city, hopefully utilizing, you know, the revenues from any national-level events, whether it's another clash, whether it's a cup series or Xfinity or Craftsman Truck Series race. But to pay for our share over the five-year period, and then at the end of that five-year period, they would sell the scoreboard to the city for a nominal amount. So it would ultimately be an asset that the city would own. We would operate and maintain it as we do now. The city's share would be limited to a not-to-exceed amount of $500,000 based on that $1 million estimate. As part of that, NASCAR would commit to bringing national-level events to Bowman Gray Stadium over the five-year period, which would give us that opportunity to recover our costs, recover our share of the cost of the new scoreboard. Winston-Salem Speedway, Inc. would retain all the advertising revenues that they would sell on that scoreboard, which is consistent with the current scoreboard agreement. City would retain any revenues that we would, from advertising, we would sell for non-football, non-racing events, and we would work with them on making sure that there was an opportunity to display Pepsi as our exclusive pouring rights provider. So with the second agreement with Winston-Salem State University, very similar provisions, other than the fact that the university's share would be limited to 10% or $100,000 based on a $1 billion cost. They would be essentially paying the city over that five-year period to coincide with our lease with Winston-Salem Speedway LLC. And again, we would all share in the annual operating and maintenance expenses for the scoreboard based on the same basis that we would put in place for acquiring the scoreboard. The university would retain the revenues from selling, advertising for football games, and then the city would retain all revenues from non-football, non-racing. So that's the item before you tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Rowell, though? Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, Mr. Rowell. The Dash Stadium just got a new video Jumbotron, right?
Yes, ma'am.
How is that Jumbotron of video screen different from what we are looking at with Winston-Salem State and NASCAR?
I'm not familiar with the specifications for the Dash's scoreboard. They, under the lease agreement with the city, that is a revenue generating asset that they are responsible for, responsible for acquiring, responsible for maintaining. So I don't know the specifications for that, but I'd be happy to reach out to them to get.
I think it would be to our interest, all parties, because they just put it in before the season started to see if they are willing to share any maintenance contracts, their procurement of the screens, the panels, and how big it is and what kind of digital quality they have.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
If there are no further questions, members of the council, I move for approval of item G 16.
Second.
Motion second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? Hall in favor of the item, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item G 17.
Item G 17, Resolution Authorizing the Convoyance of 1101 North Cameron Avenue, Home in Support of the City's Affordable Housing Objectives.
Councilmember Adams, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, do you have the motion?
Do we not want a presentation?
Sure, maybe a brief one.
Very brief. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of City Council, Chantel McClam, Neighborhood Services Director. The item before you this evening is authorization of the conveyance of the property located at 1101 North Cameron Avenue, that's in the East Ward, to Mr. Reginald Chapman for the price of $212,000, of course, in support of the city's affordable housing objectives. 1101 North Cameron Avenue is the second of five city-owned properties to be fully rehabbed and sold to qualified buyers. In order to be eligible to purchase one of these properties, you have to, one, the total income of the buyer or buyers cannot exceed 80% of area median income. Two, the home must be utilized as their primary residence. And three, they must be, they must agree to deed restrictions that include a 15-year affordability period. And if the seller, if the buyer decides to sell prior to the end of that affordability period, they would have to sell to an income-eligible buyer, and that buyer would then assume the remainder of that affordability period. Mr. Chapman has met all of the requirements, all of the eligibility requirements, and he submitted an offer for $212,000, as stated previously. The property recently appraised for $216,000, and the total cost of rehab was $126,325. So if there's any questions.
Any questions, Mr. McCam?
Councilmember Clark. You may have said this, but what's the restriction time period?
15 years.
Yes. For the audience, what is considered 80% AMI, average median income, AMI?
So for a couple, for a couple or for individual, it's around $36,000. For a couple, two, typically it's two buyers, it would be around $55,500. And for a family of four, around $69,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody for a motion?
Yes. I move for approval of Agenda Item G 7.
A second.
17.
Second by Councilmember Cipio. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you. That is unanimous. All right, we go to the public comment period, which is a time once per month that the city sets aside and invites citizens to voice their opinions that are germane to city government. When each comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes for presentation, and the comment period, total comment period will be limited to 30 minutes. But the comments should pertain to issues relevant to city government. The city council will not respond to public comments during the meeting, but may address them at a later date or ask staff to follow up. Speakers are encouraged to be civil and courteous in their language and presentation. Speakers are encouraged to be civil and courteous in their language and presentation. Insults, profanity, use of vulgar language, or gestures, or other inappropriate behaviors are discouraged. Engaging in such conduct may result in a forfeiture of any remaining speaking time, and individuals who continue to engage in such egregious behavior after being told to cease may be instructed to leave the meeting. Of course, speakers may use other avenues to pursue concerns, such as personnel issues, litigation, or confidential matters. So, we do have a number of individuals signed up, so we're beginning this discussion. And I'm sorry, I can read Dennis, but I can't make out the last name. Okay, please.
Good evening, Mayor Johns, and members of the city council. My name is Dennis Threet. I'm a resident of Healy Towers, a member of Healy Towers United, and a member of Housing Justice Now. We, the people who live in public housing, have been left out of decisions that affect us for far too long. We ask that we be given the opportunity to help select the next leader of the housing authority. We ask that more public housing residents be given seats on the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. We ask that you sit down with us, Mayor Johns, and discuss what we, the people who live in public housing, want for our city and our housing authority. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ashton Purdon, hello.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. I would just like to take a quick moment to thank you all for separating the issues and for giving us time, making a motion to give us time to speak with you all on the issues that are affecting our fire department. But I'd like to bring something up, that the continued attack on the fire department from the city manager's office is disgraceful. First, cutting our overtime budget directly affecting our staffing, which in turn affects every citizen in this city, is unacceptable. Then slashing our benefits in half is a slap in the face to the brave men and women who serve this city. To put the icing on the cake, this revised proposal, which was presented to you all Monday, June 9th, was supposed to go to a vote September 2nd. And then, on Friday afternoon, while I was on shift, I received a call saying that it was going to be voted on tonight. Again, I appreciate you all for giving me the time that I deserve to speak with you all on this issue that affects our department. If that were to go through, the writing on the wall would have been blatantly obvious that they did not want me to have time to speak with you all, which would have been bad governance and dirty politics. Are you trying to break us for speaking out? Because you won't. I've been a war for this country. This is just a walk in the park for me. At what point does this stop? What is going to make a firefighter want to stay and work for this city? We might as well work a nine-to-five, Monday through Friday, where we can go home to our families every night, where we don't have to be exposed to cancers and toxins, and take years off our lives for this job. Forty-hour workweek job sounds like a much better deal, but we do this job because we love it. We have a passion for serving the citizens of Winston-Salem and for selfless service. Yet, we're being punished for wanting to have the means to put food on our tables and to spend time with our loved ones. We have been continuously retaliated against. The firefighters feel less valued and disrespected. So, what makes them want to stay here? I've told you all that firefighters are wanting to leave left and right if this proposal goes through. They don't want to work for an organization where leadership doesn't stand up and speak out for its people. They don't want to work for a city who is continuously attacking us, but this is where you all can put a stop to it. I've met with almost all of you now and had multiple meetings with all of you, and I know most of you support us, and you support your fire department. I have told you all I will not fluff things for you. I will only speak the truth, and that is what you will always get from me. I ask you all to please weigh heavily on the decision come August 4th. Lastly, I'll leave you with this. Theodore Roosevelt once said, "In any moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The next best thing is the wrong thing, and the worst thing you can do is nothing." Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Murray.
Henry Murray, 651 North Morris Street, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council. Really, I'm here just to thank you to every one of you to separating that item with the fire department. We look forward to coming together and talking, to have an open communication. So, yeah, and I just want to thank you on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Beth Hutchins?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Ms. Fritsch?
Good evening.
My name's Beth Hutchins, and I'm here to respectfully urge you to vote against the proposed cuts to vacation and sick time accrual for Winston-Salem Fire Department employees. These are not just numbers on a spreadsheet. These are promises made to public servants who put their lives on the line to protect our city. Firefighters work long, grueling shifts, 24 hours at a time, under conditions most of us would never choose to face. Cutting their earned time off is not just a financial decision, it's a statement on how we value their sacrifice. We've seen what happens when public safety employees feel undervalued. Looked no farther than the Winston-Salem Police Department a few years ago. A mass exodus led to staffing shortages, and Chief Penn had to go to great lengths to rebuild and restore stability. Are we prepared to repeat that mistake with our fire department? When we lose experience, public safety employees, we lose more than just bodies. We lose training, leadership, and the trust they've built with our community, and we put both citizens and remaining staff at greater risk. This isn't theoretical for me. On October 7th, 2009, my husband Sergeant Mickey Hutchins responded with Officer Daniel Clark and Officer Caleb Matthews to a domestic disturbance. Mickey was shot that day and died five days later from his injuries. I know firsthand the sacrifices our public safety employees make. Following Mickey's public desire to serve the public, our nephew Preston Wicker is now a firefighter with the City of Winston-Salem. They don't hesitate to run toward the danger when the rest of us run away. Please honor the commitments made to these brave men and women. Do not cut the benefits they were promised when they choose to serve Winston-Salem. Stand with those who stand ready to protect us every day without question. Please vote no on this proposal. I consider every public safety employee in the City of Winston-Salem my child. I've given them my own time to come back and speak to rookie classes, to talk individually to people who've had similar situations that we've had. The city has always backed me totally, but because I feel that way, I feel I could come here because I want you all to realize the respect that they deserve as well as we did. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the council. I have a few questions, but the first thing I want to say is, Mr. Page, this budget proposal is extremely disrespectful to our first responders. How do you short-change an agency that isn't being paid competitively? How can you significantly increase taxes but claim there is no money for our firefighters, but yet you propose an increase for your own salary? Firefighters deserve additional pay, time off, for their incredible hours that they work. Imagine clocking into this building and can't clock out until 24 hours later. They are invaluable to our community. Day in and day out, they have dedicated themselves to ensuring the safety and well-being of this community. How dare you? Can you imagine clocking into work, not leaving until 24 hours later? The significant toll it'll take on your families and personal lives. In the infamous words of Kendrick Lamar, "They not like us," and no other first responder agency works 24 hours a day. How dare you? By proposing cuts to their benefits, feels like the city is discrediting the hard work and commitment they show every single day. This proposal sends a message that we don't value the sacrifices firefighters make. The first responders, the top, they should not be compared to anyone at any time. They are the only agency that can do three things. Rescue and fire is not the same thing. Imagine, can you scale a 60-foot building? Probably not. They are also certified in medical. Now, the police department, I know for a fact, and don't ask me how I know, that they were understaffed, which means the staff that they had on hand worked over, which means they probably had some budgetary concerns too, but you didn't cut their budget. But I'm not hating on the police department, let them get their money, but don't mess with our firefighters. I understand the need for financial responsibility, but if you truly cared about the financial state of this city, why increase your pay? If you really want to cut the fat, let's start with yours. To the firefighters, remember how they vote. Remember how they vote. He is appointed, they are elected. Don't let him write a check that y'all can't cash. Your voices matter. Your time to advocate for respect and support is now, and you're doing an amazing job. Remember how they vote. Have a good night.
Dan Rose?
Good evening, Mayor Johns, Mayor Protem, members of city council. I'm here to second the demands of the Winston-Salem Fire Department.
You have your name for the record, Mr. Rose, please.
My name is Dan Rose. I live at 1332 Pleasant Street in the sensational southeast, and I am here to ask the question of who do you serve? And that's a rhetorical question. I don't, I don't need any interruptions tonight. But when I look at who represents Winston-Salem, I see a lot of folks that don't represent us. I see folks like Sarah Dubose. Do you know Sarah? Amanda Falconberry. Do y'all know these folks? These are people that are lobbying on behalf of the City of Winston-Salem. They are paid lobbyists. Now, Mayor Protem, I appreciate you have often urged us to go to the county, to go to the state, to go to the federal level, and make our demands there as well. Well, we are paying two lobbyists in Winston-Salem, Sarah and Amanda, who work for Maguire and Woods Consulting. They live in Raleigh, they don't live in Winston-Salem. They are lobbyists for the Apartment Association, in addition to the City of Winston-Salem. How can you represent the interests of Winston-Salem residents when you are also representing the interests of one of the largest landlord lobbies in the state? So, the tenants that are here with us tonight, from Healy Towers and from Crystal Towers, the majority of them are African-American. Do you represent those tenants? Because 93% of the donors to Mayor Johns' campaign in 2024 were white. You don't have to be African-American to represent the interests of African-Americans, but do they live in communities that struggle for housing? 97% of those donors live in the West Ward, where Mr. Clark resides, and the Northwest Ward. And so, they don't represent the folks who are struggling in our community. We saw the budget unveiled tonight, a budget that had over $8 million for the Benton Convention Center. Now, wait, 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 Dr. Rose. The Benton Convention Center is a revenue generator. Do you think they could wait an extra year to get the upgrades that you're planning to give them this year? While folks in Crystal Towers, and Healy Towers, and Sunrise Towers live with mold, live with bedbugs, live with inadequate plumbing and electric, and all of these things that you're letting fester, right? We see instead that we're heaping praise on Kevin Cheshire, who let those buildings continue to rot, and we're giving away taxpayer dollars for the wrong things. Please represent us. Start now.
Good evening, Mayor Johns, Mayor Protem, and city council members. Although I am not a city resident, I'm here in support of the firefighters tonight.
Wilson, please give us your name and address for the record.
I'm so sorry. Betsy Wilson, 2510 Darrow Road. I live in Walkertown, North Carolina.
Thank you.
I stand before you tonight as someone that promotes Winston-Salem as a safe and thriving community. I am the girlfriend of a Winston-Salem firefighter. I am the mother-in-law of a Winston-Salem firefighter, and as I looked around this room this evening, I have made many friends that are firefighters and their spouses. The city's reputation as a great place to live and raise a family is built upon the dedication and the sacrifices of our first responders. However, recent discussions regarding the firefighters' benefits and staffing levels threaten this foundation. The proposed reduction in sick and vacation time to our firefighters from 240 hours to 112 hours annually directly undermines their well-being and morale. Firefighters work 24-hour shifts, averaging 56 hours a week, placing immense physical and emotional strain on them. Comparatively, other city employees work only 40 hours a week and receive at least one day a month off, which a firefighter should receive one shift off each month. They should not have to work over two months to get one day off of paid leave. This disparity sends a message to their sacrifices, that their sacrifices are undervalued. Such cuts not only affect current staff, but also deter potential recruits. With increasing demands on their time and energy, fewer individuals will be inclined to join a department that does not offer equitable benefits. The National Fire Protection Association recommends a minimum of four firefighters per truck, but your departments, and your, the city has decided to operate trucks with only three firefighters. They are already being asked to do more with less during their shifts. Additionally, the proposed benefit reductions would further discourage potential recruits. Departments in neighboring cities offer more competitive benefits, which will make it challenging for Winston-Salem to attract and retain qualified personnel. The safety of our community is directly linked to the well-being of our firefighters. Reduced staffing and benefits lead to increased stress, burnout, and turnover, all of which diminish the quality of emergency response services. In emergencies, every second counts. Delays in response times can result in greater property damage, and more critically, loss of life. As someone who promotes Winston-Salem as a safe place to live and raise a family, I would no longer be able to do so if our first responders' manpower continues...
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Your time is up.
Uh-uh.
Thank you. Olivia Doyle?
Olivia Doyle, 112 West Devonshire Street. I was going to ask that the city formally endorse the community's request for a lowered speed limit of 35 miles an hour or less on Peters Creek to protect our students and the pedestrians that live there, another pedestrian of whom was actually hit and killed last month. But Councilmember Clark's comments indicate that y'all think our students are a joke. Are you doing actually anything to hold WSFCS accountable and actually help the entire community, including the children that are the most impacted, out of this mess? Or are you just using the school system as a political chip to make your disinvestment from everything except for the cops and major corporations seem reasonable? Because demonizing the school system and pitting it against individual tax-paying residents in an effort to distract from the fact that you, as a city, have tossed tax-exempt parcels of land out to universities and nonprofits that front-line giant corporations, thank you, Whittaker Park, is not the flex that you think it is. You want to talk about jokes? How about we talk about the fact that Mayor Johns' bestie, Don Flo, evades accountability for the harm that the car dependency his businesses profit from? He evades that accountability by offering tuition assistance and internships to kids who go to FOTech, to do auto tech classes, despite the fact that the closest public high schoolers to both Forsyte Tech and the Don Flo Honda dealership are across the street from Peters Creek at Parkland High School. How do you expect those Parkland students to get to those technical education opportunities that they're telling us? As a sub, I've heard it. I know teachers who have heard it. Those children want technical education. How do you expect them to get to FOTech and to get to the Don Flo dealerships that litter Peters Creek when they have to cross a seven-lane highway to get there in the first place? How do you expect the students at that school, it is a majority Black and Latino school, to feel safe enough to go across the road to get to these dealerships, and to get to these jobs, and to get to this education, when the city is allowing the state troopers to set up an unannounced license check between the DMV and Forsyte Tech on a Friday night on Silas Creek Parkway? Do you have the statistics on how many of these students and their parents are undocumented? Do you know that in North Carolina, if you are undocumented, you are not eligible to have a North Carolina... have a North Carolina driver's license and yet you have to get to work into school every day in a car-dependent city that does not have a reliable bus system? I don't know what to ask of y'all anymore. The basic request is push the NC DOT, make a, make a formal endorsement of the community request for a lower speed limit. Maybe ask Donflew to do the same since he's got some influence there.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Chris Delalas? Just apologize for the last name there.
Good evening, Christopher Delalas, thirty-two fifty-seven Conoc Drive. I'm here speaking as, not only as a fire captain, but as a citizen of Winston-Salem. First, I want to thank you all for postponing the vote on the reduction in firefighter leave benefits. Your decision gave the city a chance to pause, reflect and hopefully correct some serious mistakes made in the process leading up to tonight. Let's be clear, the proposal brought forward by the city manager was built on flawed assumptions, misrepresentations and legal errors. A major portion of the plan had to be quietly removed days before the May twelfth meeting because it was found to violate federal and state labor laws. That's not a minor adjustment, that's a major breach of due diligence. And yet this plan was still pushed forward based on incomplete data and questionable claims. We were told, for example, that this change was necessary to avoid pension spiking penalties, but that's simply not true. Pension penalties under state law only apply to employees making over a hundred thousand dollars who receive unusually large raises in their final years, a scenario that doesn't apply to our rank-and-file firefighters. That narrative was misleading and it clouded an already complex issue with fear, not facts. The proposal also claimed to promote equity, but in practice it does the opposite. Firefighters on twenty-four hour shifts burn three times the number of hours to take a day off compared to a forty-hour week employee. So while the new policy might equalize hours earned, it does not equalize days available for use. And that's where the real equity should measure. It's not about matching hours on paper, it's about whether the benefit is meaningfully usable. Mr. Page also claimed this proposal brings the department in line with the rest of the city, but in the same plan, he states that in two thousand twenty-six is the target year for evaluating citywide accrual policies. That contradiction raises the question, why rush to change firefighter benefits now based on a standard you acknowledge hasn't even been finalized? So while I thank you for pausing this vote, I want you also to consider a couple other things. We should not be comparing ourselves to Greensboro, High Point, Raleigh, Durham. Mr. Page himself said in a newspaper article when he took this position, that one of the challenges that we face is recruiting a good talent pool. If we're already underpaid, by his own admission to those other cities, the one marketing tool we have is our benefits. So if we have the same benefits but we're underpaid, the trend that's happening now, people leaving this city to go to those cities, is going to get worse. Since this topic was brought up, five percent of the fire department has publicly said they are leaving. That's just the public. They've either already resigned or have taken steps to start that way. If you pass this, it's going to get worse. So I ask, in closing, communicate with us, work with us, form a committee to come up with a comprehensive benefits and leave plan that'll work for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Mike Klein? Mike Klein? Make sure he heard, Mike Klein? Is there other people in the committee room? Hang on just a minute, we'll see if he's in the other... Thank you. All right, that's all that signed up to be heard on the public comment period. We're down, we've got about three minutes left. Anybody else want to be heard quickly? Yes, sir? Would you give your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Stephen Hall, state level thirty-eight forty-zero, Whitehaven Drive, Ms. Hall. I did have a prepared speech that I was going to bring up today, but instead I would like to address a few things that I've put actually in a couple of emails that I've sent to the entire city council with two replies, Mr. Andre Bowen, thank you two for replying. We like to use the police department, our brothers in blue, as a comparison here. I pointed out in one of my emails that while we may earn a little bit more time than them, that at every single pay grade, that they are paid over seven thousand dollars more than the equivalent pay grade of the fire department. That was on that pay plan that was in the agenda for this evening. My personal example, I've been here for eight years, I have a competitive promotion under my bill as an engineer, I have a four-year degree. When a police trainee comes into their recruit school, they come in at my position's base salary. So equitability, I don't believe, we are, we're really comparing apples to apples in here. You can talk about, as Captain Delalas pointed out, the other cities and comparing ourselves to them and bringing ourselves back. That is not progressive, that is regressive. We are going backwards. Why would we go backwards and expect ourselves to adhere to that second bullet point of the budget presentation of maintaining city services? How do we maintain what we're doing with less? It is illogical. Another personal point I put in my email. Last year, my oldest, oh, excuse me. Last year, my oldest spent some time in the hospital. Sorry. When I called out sick, twenty-four hours came out of my bank, right? My call is fire station, I'm in the E R with my kid, twenty-four hours came out. If anybody else, if the city manager called in, the same scenario, eight hours comes out of his bank. In one month, he gets that day back. In two months, I get my day back. Is that equitable? Is that equal? Is that fair? I'll leave with this. We appreciate the motion to listen to us more diligently on this topic. I hope that the city council members will be able to reach out to maybe their individual fire department, or excuse me, fire stations that are in their, in their area. You know, there's someone there twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Come by, talk to us, see what's going on, just touch base. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. All right, that ends our public comment period. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, is there a second? Second, with Councilman Clark, all those who favor adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, we're adjourned.